We're going to call the order. The June 6th meeting of the Kingston Planning Board. Tonight is a public hearing night. And the first item on the public hearing agenda has been continued to our meeting on July 18th. That is Summit Distribution LLC. So that will be...
Well, they've asked for the continuation. You do need to continue tonight.
We do have to.
Yeah, we have to vote on it. That's right. So do we have a motion to continue the meeting till July 18?
Everyone was sent the request from Nicole Duquette with... From GPI asking for the continuation of our planning board meeting that follows the ZBA hearing in July. So I think that's the 18th?
Eighteenth is the order.
Oh, the 18th is the ZBA hearing?
No, 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 sorry. It's our 10th hearing tonight.
So that is the date that the board should...
Because we have no meeting on July 4.
That's correct.
Right, so the Planning Board's motion should be to continue this to the July 18th meeting date.
Do we have a motion to that then?
I made a motion. Continue to the 18th as requested by the applicant.
Second?
Any changes due by what time you want to?
When would they be due by?
Changes would be due by the 6th, I believe.
We've not seen... We have yet to...
We've seen anything?
See the package yet other than as an application. So there is no reason for us to have a scheduled date of...
Yeah, and quite frankly, they wouldn't be able to produce it based on changes from the previous orders.
Correct.
Okay. And it's just a design review notes?
No, they're... No, there would be the first applicant... It would be the first hearing for their application.
Okay.
So I'll second that just to continue this.
Motion by Peter Bakie, second by Peter Kaufman. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
More unanimous? Okay.
So just a question for the procedural thing. We have a mandatory required review.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
A mandatory... Sorry, should speak up here. A mandatory required review is normal, is our procedures. And does that come before the first hearing normally? Unless they ask for a waiver for that?
Mandatory preliminary review.
Sure, that's it, preliminary review.
Yes, that would normally come before the public hearing. But they've asked for a waiver of that on the premise that they... That they met with the board as a design review on a bigger project two years ago.
Unless the crossing spot.
And that was when it was actually the gas station, restaurant, and retail space.
Yeah.
And so they're asking that that requirement be waived because they had talked to the board preliminarily about a project that did also include a gas station. But that's a waiver that you can't anticipate until you take, you know, open up the public hearing, so.
Okay. So any further discussion? Seeing none? Have anybody voted in favor?
Yes, everybody did.
Are y'all all in favor? We did both.
Yeah, we did that.
Okay. So now that Robin is here, we do need to introduce everyone that is here. We have Planning Board member Rob Chisolo. We have Planning Board member Peter Kaufman. And then Merrill, I'm the chair. We have Robin Carter, our administrative assistant. We have Lori Litcher Swed. Swed, thank you. Who is our Planning Board... Excuse me, our select rep this evening. We have Peter Bakie, Planning Board member. We have Robin DeGale, Planning Board Vice Chair of the Planning Board. And we have Glenn Greenwood, who is our planner. All right.
And can I just ask one thing as we get going? And I'm sorry, what is your first name?
Lori.
Lori, I'm Glenn Greenwood, I'm the planner. Did the board of selectmen vote you as the alternate for Chris?
Yes.
Perfect. Because otherwise, we really have to revote that and take Robin as a voter instead of Lor... Laura?
Lori.
Lori. But I'm very happy that they did it the right way. Thank you.
Perfect. Okay, so the next item on our meeting tonight is the Rockingham Planning Commission, who's going to give us a presentation... Uh, excuse me, is going to review our stormwater management standards. Thank you. And representing the commission is Maddie. And how do we spell Maddie?
M-A-D-I-E-N-N-O.
Okay, and your last name, Maddie?
My last name is Dianna.
Dianna. And you spell that D? Okay, thank you, welcome Maddie.
Thank you, thank you for having me. Did everyone get a copy of the... I mean, that's what I brought. Did you have a... All right. Well, good evening again, everyone. Maddie Dianna, as the Regional Planner with the Rockingham Planning Commission. And I'm here tonight to discuss with all of you updating in the town's stormwater management regulations. You might recall, I think it was last fall, this board submitted a letter of support for RPC's grant application to DES to help some of our municipalities update their stormwater management regulations. We've since received that grant, so that's why I'm here tonight to kick us off and get started helping move through this process of updating your regulations. So my goal tonight is just to briefly review what the EPA MS4 stormwater permit is. Since that's the reason we're here talking about updating the town's regulations. And then I'm going to walk us through the draft regulation amendments, which is what you've been provided here. I'm really just going to touch on some of the bigger changes and some of the bigger components to these amendments. And then we can open it up for initial questions, reactions, thoughts, et cetera. This is a lot of information, I understand, that you're seeing for the first time tonight. By no means am I expecting any sort of decisions to be made. This is really the purpose of this meeting tonight is just to introduce the amendments and have sort of a roundtable discussion. And then it will likely take subsequent meetings to really dig into the regulations, refine, revise. And then, of course, notice them for a public hearing for adoption. Does that sound okay to everybody? Okay. So first and foremost, I just wanted to touch on a couple of things regarding the EPA MS4 stormwater permit. So first and foremost, MS4 stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. And this is a collection of structures including retention basins, ditches, roadside inlets, underground pipes, and other infrastructure that collects stormwater and discharges it into local water bodies. The MS4 permit requires towns and cities to regulate that stormwater discharge and start implementing measures to better control the pollution associated with stormwater throughout local water bodies. The MS4 permit is regulated by the EPA under the National Pollution Discharge and Elimination Systems Code. And this is all in compliance with the Federal Clean Water Act. So this is a federal permit. These are federal requirements that towns and cities have to comply with. Phase one of the MS4 permit required only cities and towns with populations of 100,000 or more to comply with the permit. And it's since then amended to require any area that falls within a census designated urbanized area to comply with this stormwater permit. So parts of Kingston, I did have a map. I'm very happy to send that around to everyone after this meeting. Parts of Kingston fall within the Boston urbanized area. And so because you have some portions of the town that fall within that area, the town is required to implement measures associated with the EPA stormwater permit. Does that make sense? Okay. I know, it's very technical. It's so feel free to interrupt me if something is not clear. So yeah, I put some maps here that I can send to you all afterward. So every town and city that's required to comply with this permit is required to develop a stormwater management program. And that program has six specific components. And they are public education and outreach, public involvement and participation, illicit discharge detection and elimination, construction and post-construction stormwater management standards, and then implementing a municipal good housekeeping, pollution, and prevention program. The only two components that concern the planning board are the construction and post-construction stormwater management standards, which you'll adopt as part of your site plan and subdivision regulations. All of the rest is for your DPW and Select Board, et cetera. There's only two components that really involve the planning board.
And we have... We have an engineering firm that consults with the town to handle those other aspects of the stormwater.
Yes, I did look. It appears to do a stormwater management program that was developed very comprehensive. So Kingston is very well suited to addressing these requirements, and you've already done so. So that... I'm going to... With that, I'm going to transition to this document that we handed out and walk through some of the draft amendments. Kingston is somewhat unique in that it looks like in 2009, the town adopted stormwater management standards. And in reading through some of these, it looks like the town kind of lumped a few of those minimum control measure components into this ordinance. So what I did is I left a lot of this the same because you already did it. You already have some of our management standards. The specific sections that I amended are your construction and sedimentary control standards and your post-construction stormwater management standards. And I did that. Beaved up those two sections and parsed them out to have those two separate sections. So I'm going to direct you to section 908.16. And that's on page 15. And it's highlighted at the top there. It should be line 592. So this is where the amendments really start. The beginning portion I just had there just so you could see your entire stormwater management regulations. So I'll walk through these and then we can have a discussion. So basically, everything in green is new language. Everything in red that's crossed out is the existing language that's going to be... That's proposed to be taken out. So what I did here is I beefed up your purpose, goals, and definitions for your construction and post-construction stormwater management standards. That's really all you need to know about that first page. Page 16, I added a definition for early purpose. I didn't see that anywhere else in your regulations, but we mentioned it quite a bit throughout these standards, so I added it there. Moving to page 17, 908.16.4, construction sites, stormwater, runoff, erosion, and sediment control. The town's already had standards that address some of these... Some of this component. What I did is I left some of that language in and then I added more language that's consistent with the New Hampshire Stormwater manuals for sediment erosion control standards. So really, I just beefed it up a little bit. I referenced the most recent state stormwater management standards. And that's all I did for that section. Moving to page 19, 908.16.5, so line 776. This is really the bulk of the amendments. These are your proposed post-construction stormwater management standards. And these standards apply to any new development or redevelopment which is subject to site plan review. Does that make sense? So anything that comes in for site plan renewal can be subject to these standards. And the highlighted areas are where we probably have the most conversation here. So we need to decide... This board needs to decide what the minimum threshold-sized projects will these standards apply to. So earlier in 2009, the town actually already established a minimum threshold of 15,000 square feet, which is why I put it in here. But that, with these standards, we can have a discussion about whether the board would like to keep that the same or change it to something else. So to reiterate that... So what this is saying now is that any projects that disturb 15,000 square feet or more are subject to these stormwater management regulations. And we can have a discussion on whether the town would like to adjust that threshold. Does that make sense?
What is... What does the federal guidance say?
There is none.
Sort of high?
Yeah, yep. So there is no cap that's established by the EPA. And that's because different federal permits have different size thresholds. So sites that disturb more than 100,000 square feet require an AOT permit. Sites that disturb an acre require a construction general permit. And then also, other towns is different. So all towns pick different size thresholds. So I would... So you want to be under probably an acre because starting at an acre, projects are having to comply with state permits such as the AOT permit and the MUDs construction general permit. And those have very stringent stormwater management standards in of themselves, which actually are very similar to the standards that we have here. So we're looking to capture as many projects as possible within reason. So the smaller size threshold you go, the more projects that you will... That will have to comply with these stormwater management regulations. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So like I said, in 2009, it looked like the town chose to require all projects that are... That disturb 15,000 square feet or more to comply with their standards. These standards are slightly different. They're more stringent than what you had before. So we can certainly discuss changing that threshold. But that's one of the bigger things that the town's decided on. There's options for a waiver for the regulations similar to your site plan regulations for projects that disturb less than whatever the minimum threshold is that the board chooses. And that criteria is under number two. On page 20, post-stormwater management for new development, these are provisions that are very consistent with the New Hampshire Stormwater manuals for post-construction management best management practices. These are state guidance for stormwater management. I... You do not need to get too in the weeds on these standards. There's a lot of engineering, technical language here, I imagine. Or most towns would have their tech... Your town engineer.
Yes. And that's one thing I did want to just make sure we mentioned was... I should have invited Dennis to this meeting because he actually was instrumental in adopting these in the first place in 2009. So getting feedback from him on these changes is really important.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So I will send him a copy of this shortly.
Sure, yeah. So yeah, so don't worry too much about if you don't understand some of this language. I personally don't understand some of this language. So a lot of it is engineering. But I just wanted to point out these are the provisions for new development that projects would have to comply with. I'm going to slip to one of the other bigger components of this. And this is on page 27. So these stormwater management standards, like I said, are very consistent with the state best management practices for stormwater management. They are also very similar to AOT permit requirements for stormwater management. The main difference with these regulations is the town's inspection maintenance procedures. So enforcing these regulations. So the highlighted portion, section A, on page 27, line 1085.
And your... Every time you give us a line number, it's slightly off because I think you have margin notes on yours.
Sure, sure.
And that presses it off. Because it's really 1091.
I apologize. It's stormwater management plan and site inspections. It's letter A on page 27. I thought I tried really hard enough for that to happen. So this is really just telling that the applicant has to provide their stormwater management plans with their site plans, and those get recorded with the plans, which is very good for record-keeping. And it's helpful for the board after the fact if it happened to need to revoke site plan approval. This is just detailing the procedure for how those stormwater management plans are recorded.
Excuse me, so at this point, that would be anything over 15,000 square feet?
Any project.
At this point?
At this point, yes. I left the 15,000 square foot threshold in there, yes. So any project that disturbs more than that complies with these regulations. And then maintenance and inspection responsibilities. I'm going to page 28. Something that this board will also need to discuss is is who is going to be responsible for inspecting the sites. I'm not sure if this town has a town engineer that does site inspections to ensure that stormwater management is being... Okay, so it sounds like maybe we... Right now, it says the Select Board or their designated agent. We can change that. So sometimes the planning department is responsible for enforcing these regulations or the community development department. It'll be what I would choose to.
Presently, it's very common for the board of selectmen to request inspections by the town engineer.
Okay, that's good to know.
We have enough development in town. It'll be a full-time town engineer job.
It trends that way sometimes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so your code enforcement provisions are the same for these regulations, obviously. The only difference is actually number four, where the town takes on a little bit more administrative responsibility for these regulations. These regulations are stipulating that the landowners have to submit an annual report to... This case, it says to the planning board by September 1st every three years. But the first report due within three years of the receipt of the certificate of occupancy.
Does that make sense? An annual report every three years? So thank you, Matt.
Oh, I might have mixed up some language.
So does it get... Do three years get submitted?
So it might just be a report to the planning board by September 1st every three years. Or it could be annual, the timeframe is going to be...
Every year for three years?
I'm sorry.
Every year for three years or...
No.
Takeout annual. A report to the planning board every three years. But the timeframe for how often landowners are required to submit their inspection reports, we can discuss that. That is a minimal, we can change that time period. I just did this in Raymond, and they chose to do the annual reporting. But would that understand that the town is responsible for getting those inspection reports and going out and making sure that, you know, that's actually true? So that's where the town's taking on a little bit more administrative responsibility for that. Okay. And then the last section is really, again, just some engineering stormwater infrastructure design criteria consistent with state best management practices. Again, your town engineer will take a look and make any amendments that they see fit. So that was the quick and dirty. That was very handy. Again, I don't expect anyone to have this fully digesting tonight. I just wanted to highlight some of the basic elements of the amendments. Maybe we could take these home and leave it on that those we know we can discuss them more. Any initial thoughts, knee-jerk reactions? Anything that you need clarity on about this point? Yeah.
I need to go backwards on you, but as far as the definitions on that, you added impervious surface. So that has come up. Is there a percentage of imperviousness Impermeability that would say... Let's say raft is impervious, but crushed gravel, you know, three quarter inch stone is semi-impervious and...
Right. So like different... Yeah, different materials.
Different... Is there a cutoff point at which we say this is... You know, if it's 90% above, it's impervious?
Right. Those standards do exist. They're not in here.
Right.
These stormwater management standards more so address disturbance, which is different than total impervious cover. So we're talking about total site disturbance during construction and what the result is post-construction. Whereas impervious surface might be, you know, a very... A specific percentage of like the parking lot is impervious cover. So those standards do exist. We can... I can hook those up and we can incorporate those, but they're not included at this point.
Okay, I have a question. On the submitting their report, whether it's annual or every three years, is that like forever for that property?
Yes. And that's another thinking. That's another administrative component the town will have to keep track of which projects these standards apply to and which, you know... Some towns might, you know, send out a reminder to landowners every however often that the board decides that they want these reports to come in and say, hey, just a reminder, your inspection reports do, or move it up to the property.
And what's the average cost of this on the landowner for the report, for the inspection to be done?
I don't have a hard number for you. It certainly depends on the size of the project and the use. I don't have a specific price. But yeah, it could be... It could be... There is a cost associated for property owners, of course.
Is there a benefit to developing a template that everybody uses consistently? Like I see that there are certain items in here that are going to need to be included. But I just... I worry about sort of a carte blanche. Send us what you think a good report is for the town, and then there's no way to aggregate that because you're getting different information from everyone who's submitting.
Absolutely.
So I don't know if there's a sample that exists somewhere that we could...
Yeah. I can certainly see what some other towns are doing. I can see and try and get some examples for this board, absolutely.
All right. So if you disturb one... If you disturb 15,000 feet of land, you then have to file an annual report.
Or you could get a check.
And that's to anybody, any type of lot, residential, no matter what. So most... If we have a two or three acre lot, and somebody puts a house... Disturbs the land and put the house and the septic system and everything else, we could be there. We could have a good portion of the town that require to do these reports if it's over 15,000 square feet. Because often the septic bed would be 4,000 anyway. The house would be 2,600 or, you know, 2,000, that's 600. You're throwing the way there, and then they have to put the driveway in, and they have to do, you know, the well, disturb for the well. Now we're just disturbing a good portion of the lot.
So only the... That is the word for site plan review. And then there is another... These will go in your subdivision regulations and...
And when the stormwater management devices that already exist come under most scrutiny is if something new is happening on the land. And we often ask Dennis to take a look at the existing stormwater devices and see if they're even actually working properly. Because if they're not working properly and we're expanding, we need to often revise and revisit those existing structures.
Would it be possible to get a copy of a post-construction stormwater management annual report?
Yes, I would look at what some other towns have, if I can, yeah, I'll try to read it and what that might be.
If you have any problem with that, call me because I'm sure that our consultant has either done them in some form for the town on the property that the town owns or for one of their other contracts, because they work for several towns.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll say a lot of projects in town are already doing a lot of this. I'm not exactly sure about the projects in Kingston, but if you have anything that disturbs more than a hundred thousand square feet, so a warehouse or just like a large development, they already have to meet very strict stormwater management standards from the AOT permit. And these are very similar to the AOT permit. So you do have specific sized projects already doing some of this and doing their own inspection maintenance reports that they report to DES. But this is more, we're trying to channel more to be submitted to the town.
So if they've had the AOT, and for those at home that don't know what an AOT, it's alteration of terrain permits.
Yes.
For, they're already doing that to DES, doing it for the town would be repetitive, so obviously they should supply the same report to the town.
Yeah, they would supply the same report, I imagine.
I would assume. How frequent are those done?
I'm not sure what the DES requires.
Let's see if we can find that out, because we might want to parallel what DES is doing so that they don't have to do a report for us every three years and one for DES every four or two.
Well, I'm sorry, so have you done, no, any projects that are, that need an AOT permit wouldn't submit inspection maintenance reports to the town. Because again, we're looking at that size threshold and I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said the cap is one acre, so forty thousand.
That's correct.
The town really shouldn't establish a little size threshold.
Anything over acre.
Over one acre, because again, now it's like you said, they're already doing this, it's already being overseen by the state. So the town really has no...
So this is for one acre and lower?
Yes.
Than disturbing one quarter of that or a little bit more than that is what's going to put this on.
Depending on what you decide.
Yeah, it's about a third of an acre, so that's not uncommon at all for small business, for very small businesses.
Very small business.
Yeah, I think, I think that's something we want to talk to, talk with Dennis about. Is maybe, maybe that fifteen thousand is something we have on the books, but I'm not really sure how closely we monitor it presently.
And whether or not it's the right number, that should be a good discussion. Any other questions we have from Maddie?
I also have a table that I can send you when I had in my presentation of the minimum thresholds that other towns have adopted. You're on there for fifteen thousand square feet, but some towns like Brentwood adopted up to forty thousand square feet, less than an acre. So, you know, towns do different thresholds and it depends on the town. I just did this in Fremont, they don't get lots of large developments, so they picked a smaller threshold to try and capture as many projects as possible. Because at the end of the day, the goal is you want to treat stormwater to reduce pollution to our local water bodies. So that's, that's the end of that goal, but at the same time, it's a daunting act, right? We don't want to put some on those smaller projects in some of these regulations.
Sounds good. Any other questions from Maddie? Thank you, Maddie.
No, thank you, I know that's a lot of information, please reach out if you have any questions about my contact information, but yeah, and I imagine we'll continue that sort of next couple of meetings.
Yeah, and I'll get this to Dennis so that he has a chance to put it as well.
Yeah, that would be excellent, I'm sure that would be...
Perfect. Thanks for coming.
Thank you, I appreciate it. So I'll bring me, I guess, with Robin, you went about when we, that's when I did and start picking the threshold numbers out.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
I can tell you for sure it won't be before the first meeting in August.
Okay, yeah, that's okay.
Just so you know, because we have no first meeting in July.
Right, and then we'll have a busy July.
And we'll have a very busy July and probably a lot of that will get carried over to August, a very busy second meeting in August, so chances are it'll be first of August or, just so that you know for your planning.
Thank you, yeah, you have a problem, you'll have those ahead of time, so you can, you know, come back with a question. By that time, I'm sure you'll have a near rollover, they will help you be more, more knowledgeable, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so the next thing that we have is the determination of development of regional impact for Unitil at Twenty-Fortol Road, solar field proposal. And for those of you at home, in case you're not aware, the definition of development of regional impact means that any proposal before a local land use board, which in the determination of such local land use board can reasonably be expected to impact on a neighboring municipality because of such factors as, because of factors such as, but not limited to, the following. Relative size or number of dwelling units as compared to the existing stock, proximity to the borders of a neighboring community, transportation networks, anticipated emissions such as light, noise, smoke, odors or particles, proximity to aquifers or surface waters which transcend municipal boundaries, shared facilities such as schools and solid waste disposal facilities. And when we declare review of the development of regional impact, it means that any community that we decide might have a regional impact and we notify them of this would have the same status in a board meeting, a planning board meeting as in a butter. So, how do we feel about determining the development of regional status for Unitil? After hearing their initial proposal?
I think we just go through the items one by one and we can discuss them.
And the only, the only thing I want to caution the board is that was a design review and so it was not a full plan set. And they have not submitted their application yet for site plan review, we gave them until Thursday of this week.
Okay.
So...
Does this make me premature?
The issue is, we know that it's coming.
Right.
So I would caution you to, whatever motion you make, make it contingent upon us receiving an acceptable application on Thursday. Because if for some reason, they've indicated to us, because I've asked directly after our design review, are you comfortable that you'll be able to get us an application for the eighth? And they told me yes, and I haven't heard a word from them since. So I'm taking that as they're feeling very comfortable that they'll have their application to us on the eighth. Because we're not supposed to do a determination if we don't have an application.
Right.
But I think that we're going to have an application on Thursday.
Okay, and then, this is a trick though, and this is where we rely on you, is that between the time of the application and scheduling the hearing, you have to have that DRI and then ask me at a meeting of the planning board. So, yes, if you see something that says, oh, I feel better asking the board about this, you've got to get it to the next meeting as you're doing right here so we can make that determination. And I think that would be, I think we've seen the plans enough to be able to answer these pressures.
I, I'm not certain it is a project of regional impact, but I, I think that it is viable to, we are assembled as a board in a legitimate meeting and we have seen a design review on an application that we have been told we will get in two days. So I, I think that the discussion is a legitimate one to have.
So make the discussion and if we do make a motion, it will be contingent upon receiving an application.
Upon receipt of application.
Right.
Okay. Can someone just remind me, remember where this is? No, no, I got that, where it is in relation to any of the neighboring towns.
You know where Mill Road is, goes from Saddle up over to the towards the head of the dip.
Yep.
If you drive up down that road westerly, there's a small road, you may not see it, it kind of comes at an angle. It's called Toll Road and it heads back and services houses on the left and right, reaches power lines, the universe is powered for that at which point it deteriorates into just a, you know, deferment and...
So what would be, Hampstead would be then the closest?
Hampstead would be the closest.
And it's still a good distance from there, right?
Yeah, I thought I heard that it was close to Danville.
Sorry, Danville, you got the people who...
Right, Danville and Hampstead are both there, but what is closer to the other side would be?
Right, it's the, it's the Danville end of Frytown Forest.
Because we had people here from Hampstead.
Danville, Danville, yes.
So it's probably Danville more than Hampstead that we need to be concerned with.
I think it is definitely Danville we have to be concerned with, not Hampstead.
Yeah, because they were concerned that they'd make some in the Fry Road.
Right, there was an access in their road.
That would be a budding parcels, right?
Yes, they actually are in Fremont.
No, not Fremont.
Danville?
I mean, Danville.
These are both east of Hampstead.
I just, I mean, we, if we wanted to be safe, we could say Hampstead, but I think that the closest actual impact is Danville.
I think Hampstead's a bit off, isn't it? Over toward, more toward Hunt Road.
Whoever one of the abutters was mentioned it when she spoke.
Yeah, and she was definitely Danville.
She was Danville.
I just can't remember who it was. I think it was one of these two, wasn't it?
She was on the side of...
Something about the town forests.
Right, so I, I can choose up here. And a ways away.
There was some distance away, there was the end of Fry Road.
So I mean, that's, that's the case, that, that's, the case is either we notice both or one, but I think that the concern is really with Danville rather than Hampstead.
Yeah, the last meeting and it said the westernmost part of the property is almost at the Danville Town Line.
Yeah.
Okay, so if we're going to look at, thinking only of Danville, if we're going to look at the six items. Relative size and number of dwelling units as compared with existing stock, well, there's no dwelling units, so that doesn't count. Proximity, proximity to the border of the neighboring community, we'll probably want to discuss. Transportation networks doesn't apply. Anticipated emissions such as light, noise, smoke, odors or particles, which we probably discuss. Proximity to aquifers or surface waters which transcend municipal boundaries, not really.
No, Hampstead does, Hampstead, sorry, Hampstead water does pull out from that area of Hunt Road, but it's not really fed by that.
Yeah, it didn't seem to me from the discussions we had with them that there was any impact at all to groundwater or surface water.
They don't touch groundwater or surface water. And Hampstead Water Company is up on Winchester.
No, no, I'm talking about where they have property in Kingston where they pump water out to supply their company. So they basically buy, they use their property in Kingston to provide water supply. And that's off of Hunt Road, but that's far, farther away, but it's...
Where is that?
If you go into Hunt Road, it's on the north side of Hunt Road, setback, they have proper property, you know, gate and stuff. And it's a, it's a water supply for Hampstead Power Water, you know, they, it was before the town instituted the public water supply ordinance. So there's a hand, grand total, but be that as it may, this particular project isn't, they're not...
From my perspective, doesn't create any concern.
No, no, not for the public water supply, but we were talking about, they're talking about aquifers across boundaries and, but that's the only one I can think of. And, and this doesn't affect the aquifer because it's...
Right, or surface waters, doesn't affect any of that.
Or surface waters, yeah.
And then shared facilities such as schools, schools and solid waste doesn't do that. So the only ones we really would want to talk about would be proximity, proximity to the borders and anticipated emissions. And we knew that light wasn't an issue, smoke wasn't an issue, odors or particles, but they had mentioned noise five hundred feet away. And Danville, those properties were more than five hundred feet away.
Right, during construction, I think, because the only noise you're going to get post-construction is going to be the, you know, the electric motors that drive.
Right, the electric motors that move the units.
And they said that you wouldn't hear anything five hundred feet away, so I don't think that, I don't know how you all feel about it, but...
I've heard those motors, you had a quiet day near them.
Okay.
They're not...
So if we're not worried about noise, proximity to the borders fits.
Yeah, that's the only one that really fits.
Do you think we should notify Danville for that or? It's so there's no road that goes through to Danville, oh, Fry, Toll Road goes, but everything else is off Fry, there's nothing, Toll Road stops.
Right, I can't, I, I don't remember right offhand how close they said the Danville line was to their extent of cut.
We can probably figure that out.
Yeah, they don't show, probably not, perhaps.
No, because it was not there, it was farther away.
Yeah, I was looking for it.
I, I mean, I, I don't remember the measurement, my, in my mind's eye, it seems like there is a large stretch of untouched land between Danville and where they're actually going to clear cut to do these solar arrays.
Yep. Sometimes I can find it through.
Yeah, I think proximity to borders really applies where there's going to be an effect from the project.
Where there's why?
Where there's going to be an effect.
Exactly, exactly.
Not, not just that it's close, which five hundred feet would be, or a thousand feet might be close.
That there would be an effect.
But there would be some kind of, oh, yeah.
See what I did there?
Oh, yeah, I saw you did there, I used the word.
She's sneaky, that one, she is smart.
Anyways, yes, I, I, and so that answers really the question, I think.
We're thinking that there's probably no regional impact.
There's, there's nothing in here indicating that, they did say that they, I'm just reading off of the minutes, right? Mr. Golan?
Who?
Yeah, he's the, he's the lead engineer.
Okay, so that they did look at regional impact, they don't believe there is any, they looked at the criteria for DRI and they're not impacting the school systems transit and that a lot of the items do not apply. Right.
Right, proximity, proximity would be the only one that does, but proximity combined with impact has to...
So they did say if there is any adjacent community, then they have to be identified and must be sent notification of the determination.
Right.
So we're thinking it doesn't apply?
To look at what?
Do we need a motion for that or do we just...
Yes, we definitely need to vote.
Do we just ignore it?
No, 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 no.
That's probably not with this.
So do we have a motion declaring regional impact?
I will make a motion that we do not feel, or this board does not feel, that the project at Twenty-Fortol Road for the solar field meets the criteria for regional impact as defined in thirty-six fifty-five.
I think we need to take the word feel out and maybe use something like has determined.
Has determined.
Has determined.
Has determined that there is so, yeah, has determined that there is no...
Just in case anything gets later.
Right, so has determined there is, the board does not consider this a project of regional impact.
Okay. Did you get that, Robin?
Yeah.
All right, so the motion was by Robin, seconded by Peter. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's unanimous. Okay. So, we have a couple of sets of meetings here. Robin has made a couple of revisions that she put in yellow. And so do we have, shall we have revised minutes? Do we? Do we have a sidewalk? That's okay, do we have a motion to accept the minutes of May second?
Well, we accept the minutes of May second as submitted.
Any errors, omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion to accept the minutes of the sidewalk that took place on May thirteenth.
Again, I'll move the minutes for the sidewalk to May thirteenth.
Second? Second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Perfect.
I'm not, I'm not voting, I wasn't there.
Yeah, I wasn't.
Okay. Two extensions. Although we were told that that instruction session we had, what was it, two years ago, that you don't have to be in a meeting to accept the minutes.
You don't.
Oh, really?
I accept.
No exceptions?
No, you don't have to attend it to be there.
I guess not.
Because they say that
As long as you're comfortable with what the minutes are required.
Yeah, they don't, the municipal association told us that they don't like extend, extensions in any reason unless it's a conflict of interest.
Okay.
Yeah.
Such, they want you to vote on everything.
Aye.
We'll revoke one exception.
Okay, we do have one piece of correspondence. It is a invoice from Dennis Printel for the L E R and Cheney Lot Line Adjustment. He reviewed the plans, the calculations, and attended the planning board meeting, and the total cost was a hundred and sixty-five dollars. Do you want to agree that's okay to pay?
Thank you.
Okay. Any other business that may come before the board before I bring something up? So, I have a policy change that we've sort of have been, people have been talking about, saying that as a convenience to all of us, Robin gets all the information out to us in preparation for every meeting well in advance of the meeting. All of the reports, the letters, the correspondence, she gets everything to us, and we have a chance to review them. Because I remember the time, a few years ago, when you walked into a meeting and it had stuff stacked in front of you, and it took forever for us to go through them. Now we have the opportunity to actually review them well in advance. And that's all really good, but we're talking about, and everybody loves that, I believe, right? Nobody objects? A policy, a policy, in addition to our policy manual, that states that the information that we receive prior to the meetings is not given in any, or presented in any other public forum prior to being presented at this meeting, at a planning board meeting. In other words, if one of us attends another meeting, we can take that with us to talk about at that meeting, or anything like that. It just stays, it has to come here first and be presented here before our board. So if Len's comments come to us, we should take them to another meeting, be it historic, conservation, or zoning, or anything like that, and talk about any of that before they have been presented to us. Was the idea behind that. How do we all feel about that? That's
That makes sense.
I would add, add to that, that the information we get from attorneys doesn't go outside the, at all.
No.
It stays privileged information.
Yeah. Well, we add that to it. Why don't we put that in the form of something that we can vote on at our next meeting? Super. Okay, so anything else that we think needs to come before the meeting? We're getting out of early. I'll go over to what's a scoop. Just rest it down here. All right, we have a motion to adjourn? Oh, I would, people would do that, we do have the sidewalk, don't forget the sidewalk, on July, on June seventeenth, rather. And that's at Unitil to go look at the solar.
I thought I wouldn't have forgotten that.
You write that down, I would remind you.
You would have seen it before. I'm not going to be here again.
Yeah, I forgot it on my, now you're counting.
That's the service of the main seventeen, for that.
What's up there?
Right about it, father's passed away. They have a celebration alight up at the house, or the main, on Saturday, the day before Valentine's Day.
The rest of them are having their condolences in May. Will be having our condolences walking the land over at the solar site.
Thank you, bud.
All right, so, the next, this is before our next meeting, and the next time we see you all will be Saturday morning at eight AM at Toll Road. I did take a look at Toll Road, and you know how they talked about maybe changing the road a little bit at the end? And when I came down Mill the other day, I noticed it was a nice police officer there doing, running radar. So I saw exactly, they said it was town property, so I saw exactly where that was, because I assumed he was parked on town property. So there is some space on that little bit of town property adjacent to Toll Road, where there could be some parking. That's my otherwise, because Toll, the road's pretty narrow, it'd be pretty hard to park on it, I think. Any other thoughts, questions, anything? Okay, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Sure.
And we're done.